Evening, Tony.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Canty.
How are you, my friend?
A little wet. I just got off the boat.
Ah. Yeah, just get out the back, yeah, doing some work.
No, I'm out there collecting lobsters.
How's the fishing?
I'm one ahead of last year.
Good man. Is that mine?
What?
The one?
Yeah. Come on down and get it.
On my way. Hey, Josh.
Hey, Gene. How are you?
Good, better.
Good, had to hear.
Thank you. I'm not on video here, am I?
You're a big G.
That's good. Is Mark back?
No, he's, he's not. He won't be joining us tonight. He comes back next week.
You all set, Josh?
Um, yes, I am. It is 6:32, so as the vice chairman in the absence of the chairman, I declare the June 28th, 2023 Board of Select meeting in session. We have only one item on the agenda, which is for a cost of living increase vote for the Essex County Retirement Board, or whatever the proper term is. And I am, I'll make the motion, Gene, if that's okay with you.
Yep, please.
I moved at the Board of Selecting vote to approve the Essex Regional Retirement System's local 5% cost of living adjustment as presented.
Seconded.
Discussion.
Do you want me to take it off?
Pardon me?
Would you like me to start it off?
Um, I'll start off.
Okay.
So first I want to say that I want to support the town's retirees. They normally get a 3% raise, and this year there was an allowance to increase that to 5%. So I always try to make my decisions based on fact, figures, and fairness. And when we were presented with the vote last week, in my opinion, the facts and figures were not available. So that's why we're doing it this week. We have had a chance to collect it and understand those facts to my satisfaction anyway. I spent time with Allison, our finance director, and Tony and went over the facts and at least have estimates for those figures. I will point out, looking at the, the, the letters from the retirement board, that they made a request that this vote happened by April 1st, so you know, we obviously are kind of late doing this, so.
That was extended, the deadline was extended, though.
Yeah, no, I know the deadline is June 30th, but also with something like this, in I, I would like to, I would like the advisory and finance committee to have a, the chance to at least be made aware of it and hopefully present an opinion. So going forward, I hope when we can get closer to those things. Another one concern I have is that I've learned that the retirement fund is not fully funded. It's funded at approximately 60%, and, but by mass law, it must be fully funded by 2035, so that's good news that it will be fully funded in the, by 2035. It seems illogical to me that when something's underfunded, a response would be to spend more money, but that's, that's what the retirement board voted to do, four to one. So the important part for me is that the additional funds to bring the COLA increase from 3%, which was approved last July, up to 5%, which would be retroactive to last July, is about $12,000 a year for the town in the hot for the next 12 years, which ultimately will come mostly from our real estate tax bills, as I understand it. So if we have about 1,500 households, that's about $10 a household. And frankly, my biggest concern with 5% increase, COLA increase is in the fairness area. We're, as a town, bounded by Proposition 2 and 1/2, and we've recently executed contracts with our unions and teachers and you know, they're generally in the 2% to 3% annual increases, and it it's until I learned more, it felt like it would be unfair to our current employees to give the retirees 5%. Now that we've dug a little deeper, I understand that if this 5% is only on the first $16,000 of a pension. So 5% of $16,000 is $800 a year, and the additional amount is whatever two fifths of that is about $350 a year. So if a person has, as an example, an $80,000 a year pension, $800 is a 1% increase. If they have a lower pension, such as 40, that's a 2% increase. That goes a long way for me in terms of fairness to our current employees and, and the cost of living adjustment being the same or less, depending on what the pension, someone's pension amount is than our current employee, so I feel a lot better about the fairness of this 5% increase because it's only on the first $16,000 of the pension. So those are, those are my opening remarks.
I, you know, in looking at this and looking back to our last vote, I don't think that, and I'm parroting what you're saying, basically, Josh, in that we, we didn't have the data, the data to support what we were about to vote on. It wasn't a matter of whether we were going to vote yes or no, it was more what causes this, what creates it, how is it determined, what's the end? One of the things that I come up with listening to people and reading articles is what's the indices Tony used to create the COLA across the living? How is that determined?
In this, in this scenario, it's, it's not us that determines it. It was the legislature that actually passed legislation specific to this that allowed retirement boards in the state to increase from a typical 3% to 5%. So it actually didn't, it wasn't something that we developed in-house. It was the legislature that actually, you know, made that determination.
But I guess, I guess a short answer would be 3% is typical. Is that, is that fair, Tony? That's what you and Allison and I discussed, I think.
Okay. That's, that's, that's all I was looking for at the last meeting, and, and I'm glad we're taking the time to go through it in, in order to make a, an affirmative support of our retirees and employees.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I guess I may be repeating myself and maybe repeating you too, Gene, but last, to, to put it in simple terms, I felt like last week we were asked, do you want to spend more money? And there was no answer to how much that money, how much money we were talking about. It was 2% of an unknown figure, so I feel better knowing how much money we're talking about. And I also understand the number of retirees is, I think 32 was the current number. Yeah, so I'm grateful for, to Allison and Tony for to get better information.
Okay, well, I'm comfortable with what I've heard and I'm I've heard, and I'm comfortable with what's been developed. Did you say Allison had put some numbers together, Tony?
Yep, she after last meeting, Allison and I followed up with the Essex Regional Retirement Board, you know, to, to really try to nail down some of the information that you guys were seeking. You know, at, at first, you know, they, they kind of were reluctant to give us some definitive numbers because really, the estimates are not definitive. You know, it's, it's, it's a good estimate, but obviously, it can change based on, you know, how the market fluctuates over the next 11 years, and also the number of retirees, the number of communities in the system. So we're pretty confident that we're looking at about $12,000 a year in additional, in addition. And as of right now, you know, that's, that's calculated based on the fact, as Josh had mentioned, that the system has to be funded by 2035. And that's what the current legislation says, or what the current laws requires. But certainly, you know, the legislature could in the next 11 years, extend that out, in which case, our cost per year would decrease. You know, or things could change in the future and another option to do more than 3%. So there's, it's really hard to say definitively, you know, this is going to be $12,500 every year for the next 11 years. It could change, but it's a pretty solid number to make your decision upon for the information that we have at hand today.
Thanks, thank you.
And I, and I apologize that, you know, we didn't have that information for you at the last meeting. I will, I'll take that one. I should have pressured, you know, should have asked a few extra questions to the retirement board, so that we could have had that for you at the meeting.
There's a lot going on.
Yeah, almost all of it as well.
Oh, that's right.
We don't have Citizens Forum on the agenda, but Josh, as acting chair, it's, it's up to you if you want, you know, to take comments before you vote.
Gene, before we go there, Gene, do you have any more discussion?
No, no, I'm, I'm good.
I don't have any more discussion, and I'm prepared to vote, so I would like to just go ahead with the roll call vote.
Gene, Canty, I.
Josh, Andrew, mine. So I guess that's it.
There's one question in the chat from Joe Mellon was where does the total vote currently stand? I think what he's referring to is where do the other communities? Joe, you don't want to come up from you? Is that, is that what you're asking?
Let's assume that it is.
Yes, Tony.
Okay.
Yep, so it's still the same as it was last week when we, when we met. So there's 19 communities in the system. 12 communities have voted. And now tonight, 13 communities have voted. Seven have voted in the affirmative. Six have voted in the negative. So I believe they need to get to two thirds of the 19. So there's still, they need another six communities to vote before the end of the week in the affirmative for it to go into effect.
Ah, I was under the understanding that Swamsk had said no.
Swamsk is not in the Essex Regional Retirement System. They have their own retirement system.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else in the chat? Or any citizens want to unmute themselves and comment? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn made.
Seconded. Roll call vote?
Gene, Canty, I.
Josh, Andrew, mine. I think we have a new record. 14 minutes.
Nice show.
Thank you all.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Bye.
Bye.